And the other is, we're just, as Parks Commission, we're just a recommendation board.
Sure.
It all ends up with the City Council has hold.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know if we know at this point or not, but like, so when you're talking about when the trade is made, you know, there's a, what would you call it?
Yeah, it's like a performance.
Yeah, so it seems to me that the cost of altering that land, you know, if it was decided it was best used as a boat ramp turnaround, you know, you have minimal cost. But it's gonna be a kid's lash pad and fountain area, and that's a pretty, like, substantial cost. So are they willing to...
You know, I'm wondering, what's the monetary bond? Do they give you an amount?
I was at that meeting. Um, yes, I was at that meeting, and they, and that's, I was uncomfortable with, because I think it needs to be fair for both parties. And, and in that, in that meeting was said, you know, "We're giving you a blank check." Well, I wanted a, a amount on that check, because it needs to be fair, because what one person's vision is can be completely different than somebody else's vision.
Yeah, that's interesting. And I think as for that performance bonds, yeah, created and came in and...
Right. I mean, we've only, again, we've only had a couple of meetings, and I know that a lot of things have been at the city level being discussed. I just wanted you to have, I just wanted you to have our perspective, where we were coming from.
And thank you for that. Um, we've, I, I think we've had enough discussion on something that we may not even have joined. Um, you know, to be honest, we've got a really large topic to cover next, so, um, thanks, Andy, for that update. Barry, thank you for your input, too. Appreciate it. Um, I, I think as far as the planning commission, right, we're, we stand ready. If we have to do something, we will, and, uh, you know. But I, it look, it appears as though it's more in Parks, ballpark than City Council. Where it appears, so. Having said that, uh, let's go to the recreational marijuana ordinance discussion. And we have a few papers. And you should have about five pages to read. Uh, it's after the Bow's Road. Andy, you wanna start in? Everybody got it? Uh, Andy, you wanna start in and just kinda run through some of it and see when we can stop? Anybody has a question at any given time, just speak up, okay? So I think everybody here, if I remember fine correctly, was present at the, the joint meeting.
I was not.
Uh, okay, you are not. So, um, by way of background, what we discussed at the, the Planning Commission City Council meeting on January twenty-second, um, was basically kind of introduction to how to proceed with permitting and regulating marijuana establishments within this, this city level. Um, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which was approved by voters in November of this past year, enables the, um, communities to, if they so desire, to permit recreational marijuana establishments within their communities. Um, the, the medical, uh, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, the medical version of this from a couple of years ago, also contemplated, I think, five different, um, types of commercial establishments. And that language was written to say that if you, as a, as a community, do nothing, you are opted out and you must specifically opt in. Uh, this, this act is written to get the opposite of that. So unless you specifically opt out, um, you're opted in. The city did not specifically opt out of this, so if they're in, uh, or, or the city has, has opted in, and there are a number of different facilities that we'll need to, to talk about. So, um, at, at that previous meeting, we talked about the different types of facilities that, that could be permitted. Um, at this point, there are a lot of unanswered questions, which is probably not surprising. Um, but some of the things that we initially started talking about is how, how does the city go about figuring out where it should go from a zoning perspective? So, um, what I have for you here, and then what I, I provided is just kind of some, some conversation topics. It would talk about what sections of the ordinance we would amend. So on the top of page two, uh, we talked about, at a minimum, probably amending chapters two, uh, which is definition. That's where we put all of our marijuana, the definition. So we defined what marijuana is, what the types of facilities are. We would do that in chapter two. Um, we would look at amending district chapters. I had suggested chapters twelve, which is C three, uh, twelve A, which is I L L industrial, and then chapter thirteen, which is industrial. Um, those are the three districts that made the most sense to me from the zoning standpoint as to where they would be permitted. We'll get into the why here in a second. And then, um, my suggestion is that they would be permitted as a special use, as opposed to a used permitted by right. Um, so special land uses have a little bit higher, higher, uh, burden for approval. That can be to, to demonstrate more, or for that to be approved, and also the city, um, can adopt further regulations on those types of facilities in the city. So, um, we walked through, um, in our report, starting on page two and continuing on page three, uh, for some of these topics, zoning districts. Um, so going to, and there's not a word.
You got maps on these?
Yeah, I've got maps on, on my computer, and I'll show you maybe. Um, so there's a few things, so this is, is, the city is zoning that right here. And so there's a few things to be aware of in the act. And the first thing is that the act itself says that, uh, facilities can't be permitted in any district its own exclusively for residential use. So right away, that takes our, that's our suburban residential, R one, R two, R three, and H P districts on the equation for all intents and purposes. And as, as a practical matter, I don't know if it would make sense to have a commercial establishment in that district anyways. We don't really allow any other commercial establishments in those districts, so wouldn't it make sense to, to, to do that? But for the purposes of our discussion, all of these residential districts that are this shade of yellow and orange on the map, which is most of the city, uh, as you can see, are, are pretty much properties that would not be eligible to have a, a facility located on them. And then continuing on, looking at some of these other districts, um, we have C one, C two, and C three. C one is neighborly business. That's actually a, a district that exists in title only. There's no place on the map that's actually zoned, C one. C two is your downtown. Uh, C three is your general business, so that's everything out here on, uh, West Main Street. We have mixed use, which is the green. Uh, that's just a few properties over here, light industrial and general industrial. There's only a handful of light industrial properties as well. There are two right here and here. Um, I think we're on the tires on one of these, if I recall correctly. And the other one, there's, there are a couple of other light industrial properties that might be back over here somewhere. I don't remember. Um, general industrial, which is, which would be all those grays on the north side of Main Street down here where Machine Wire is. Uh, this stuff down here, which is, like, this is the, um, oh, the Grand National property, um, and some other sites here. So as you can see, there are a few places in industrial and C three and light industrial where this could conceivably work. So what we did to walk through further, to kind of narrow this down, is when we looked at the act. So that results in a map looks kinda like this. So all this kinda gray, brownish shaded stuff here are properties where it's not gonna work, per the act, not per anything that, that the city has. Okay? Um, and so that leaves us with C three, which is this pink right here, uh, industrial, which is the gray. The, the River's Edge District, which are primarily properties that are within the hundred years of what Way and Flood Plain. So we have a little bit of C two, if it could be possible, over here, um, and that's about it. So this kinda limits already quite a bit where this could conceivably go. Uh, these big blobs that we see here and over here, um, also per the act, it states that a, a marijuana establishment cannot be within a thousand feet of a school. And in the act, it, school is, is limited to being K through twelve. So preschool is not specifically excluded by the act. So at this point, this is kinda what the act shows you. So this is a basic one-thousand-foot buffer, um, from school properties. So that kinda cuts out most of downtown. All of your mixed-use district goes away. Um, the other thing that we talked about on the twenty-second with, with that joint meeting is also including preschools in that one-thousand-foot radius. So when we include preschools, that bumps that radius out to doing something like this. So it brings this out all the way down across Main Street, um, and it bumps out over here, uh, to take out a, a, another chunk on the east end of town. So now we're really kinda starting to see what's left in work. And so what's really left over, that's, that's honestly very viable, is, is C three. So there's a little bit over here. Um, there's all this C three over here. There's a little bit of, of downtown where it, it could go, and I guess one of the planning commission you've discussed items would be, would you want to allow any of these in that downtown district? Um, River's Edge is, in theory, a place where it could go, although, um, really, the only uses that are permitted in this district are very low-intensity uses. They're underwater all the time. So for the purposes of, of this conversation, we kinda figured that these, these properties are not realistically developable, um, just, just purely due to, to the, the flood plain issues. So, uh, as you can see, our legend over here is, is kinda shrinking smaller and smaller. Uh, but this kinda gives you an idea of just the act, and then, you know, a little bit, the city deciding with regard to preschools, uh, limits the available properties quite a bit. Um, so that's kind of the, the starting point. Um, the other things that I think would be totally important for the question to talk about is how we would, uh, you know, if there are further restrictions or buffers desired from other areas. So what, what, what some communities do, and honestly, what Lowell does with other land uses, like performance halls and theaters, and I think even some types of schools, is there's language in the ordinance right now that says that, like, a theater can't be within a hundred and fifty feet or something like that. I mean, residential is only partial. And so these other maps that, that I'll, that I will show you here kind of show what that would look like if we enacted a similar kind of buffer around residential zoning. So this one here, map three, so this blue here is fifty feet from any residential district. So it's, it's a little hard part to tell, um, from here, but it does start to, you know, it moves across the street, and it starts to further exclude some of those areas. And we have another, another map where, when you move it to, to a hundred, and this is a hundred and fifty feet. So the bigger you make that radius to isolate, you know, to make sure that you're not being right close to neighborhoods, you can do that. Um, but as you do that, you need to be aware that that, that is going to further limit that possible development on additional properties off the state. So, um, I'm not advocating for you to do one thing or the other, but it's, it's more of just being aware of what, you know, some of the ramifications are going to be of those decisions. Also have a map in here, I think it did about hundred feet, which do come up for some reason. Yeah, so it's a hundred feet, so we have, let me drag this over to the right spot. So this would be fifty feet. This would be a hundred, this would be a hundred and fifty. So you kinda see how fifty feet is, is less restrictive. I mean, zero is obviously restrictive. So that's basically any place in any, any, any location in this district, a marijuana establishment could conceivably go.
Can I take that just a little bit bigger, so zoom in or not?
Uh, yeah.
Well, that's, that helps.
Okay, good. So, um, this is the fifty-foot, um, radius. We jump over to our map that shows a hundred-foot radius. Um, you can kinda see how that starts to heat up a little bit more on the edge of some of these commercial properties. And, uh, as we bump that up again, I'll span this a little for you. I mean, really, when you get to a hundred feet and beyond, you start cutting out bigger pieces of land. Um, again, this is just for informational purposes for the session. I'm not saying you gotta be a hundred and fifty. I'm not saying F through zero. Not saying you can't do three hundred feet if somebody wants you. Um, what you have to make sure of, however, is that whatever, uh, regulations you enact, you can't make it so that opening one of these is unreasonably imprac- impractical. So you can't make your regulations so restrictive that they have the effect of making it impossible to operate. Um, and that's something that we don't do in zoning anyways. We, you know, we don't advocate for it. And even if you wanted to, to, to do it with some other type of land use, um, we can't do that, Larry. You have to make it reasonably possible to accommodate it. And, um, you know, I mean, the city has opted in, so, you know, that, that kinda has to, I think, sit in, in, in the back of your mind, is something, as, as you think about, is that the city is moving forward with, with permitting some of these establishments. Um, I think, so the charge for the planning commission, and I think the first one is to figure out, um, where, and we, I guess, made some suggestions as to which districts make the most sense. Um, you don't have to allow it in industrial and C three and light industrial. You could say only C three or only industrial, or whatever. That's, that's up to you. Um, I would, by the way, in the back of your mind, some of that stuff about, you just have to make sure that, that the regulations are, are, you know, fair, and they're not so restrictive that it makes it impossible to operate.
And is the, um, um, Saint Mary's School put in there? I mean, it, it doesn't look like it is.
Yeah, so that one's right. Well, the Saint Mary's property would be, it's right here. So that's what this little blob that comes out here. That's what this is. So the first map here that I showed you, this one doesn't include it. This one does. So you can see, there's just the two commercial daycares, one on, or would be.
And right here, about this church.
Yep, that's over here, um, I think it's.
This property right there, I think.
And the other one is on, or would, is proposed to be, I think, would be located right here. So this little extension of this, this isolation, isolation radius would, um, include those two facilities. So this is what the act requires, and then based on our discussion on the twenty-seventh at that meeting with the Planning Commission Council, that could, these buffers would be extended then to look like that. So, I mean, this is basically, um, where you are now, and so how you proceed beyond this, if there are additional locational, sort of controls you wanna put on it, that's, that's at your discretion.
When we were having that discussion, I think people thought part of the adding the preschools was gonna knock out sort of the Main Street, right, intersection nearby, the Union Brewing and stuff.
Yeah.
And, and, wow, a brewery next to a pot shop could be like a magical combination for some folks. I think we're all kinda hoping that I did phone that out and keep it out of there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really close, so, so the light is right there.
Exactly.
So if we zoom in, I mean, they, basically, this is New Union right here.
Okay, I was thinking the other.
Um, so, I mean, it makes it really close. It feels like it's probably.
Well, and on the other corner there, you have a, you have a public museum.
Yep.
Which one is, is, um...
So that gas station, gas station, New Union.
And kitty furniture, and I mean, one is the public museum.
Yep.
You can take down, and you also have a closed office.
Yeah, and so obviously, I mean, the public places.
Can, can we eliminate that if we wanted to?
Eliminate what?
That, that red area there on the period?
This?
Yeah.
Well, that'd be your downtown.
Yeah, so you, so you could, um, and what we had proposed in our report as kind of a starting point would be to allow only C three, which is this lighter pink, uh, light industrial, which is this light gray, and then general industrials is darker gray. So we have not, at this point, our suggestion would be to not allow it in this downtown district.
Right.
Uh, there seemed to be general agreement at that meeting that maybe downtown, uh, doesn't work just because everything's a little bit closer together. Um, you know, we're not sure what some of those, you know, physical needs are going to be of, of the facilities, how they're gonna wanna operate. Um, and to be honest, there's just more actual property available out here as opposed to what's a relatively confined area, um, right in your downtown. So, um, yeah, you can, if you want to not include C two at all, that is something that you would, you would, you would be able to do, if that was the direction you wanted to go.
I think that was the direction at that meeting on the twenty-second, I'm pretty sure it was.
Yep. So, yeah, this is just kinda shown here for, you know, demonstrating, I guess, what, what part of the possible is, you know, I'm not necessarily advocating one way or the other. It's just, this is sort of what we are.
Barry's just gonna give you some public comment. Um, I, I was no voter, but I, I commend the city, um, for allowing it, because the voters voted for it, and that's who you represent, so I, I commend you for doing that. Um, the, the, the schools, you know, I understand all the, all the things about it. Um, again, I just was out visiting my daughter out in Denver, Colorado. Um, and so because I knew the city was going through this, so I, you know, looked, and, and there was cannabis stores located throughout, um, the, the areas that we drove. I, I didn't see any, I'm gonna say rift raft. I didn't see any. I, I mean, there were, there were nice presentable fronts. Um, again, when, when you're talking about not having it by the schools, I understand that. So I'd also look at, like, the little pink part that goes along Bow's Road that's right across from the park. Again, I, I'm not so sure of having a, a store located, um, uh, next to a park would be, you know, a great place to have it either. So I'm just, you know, you understand, you, you can't limit it everywhere, but, um, again, you know, and I know that the city, 'cause I, my question when it first came up, so are we gonna allow medical marijuana? And it was, 'cause we voted no, and again, I was just, I'm on a stance where I think medical marijuana is, is more important than recreational marijuana. So I, I don't understand the, the whole thought of, well, we're gonna have recreational, but we're not gonna have, uh, medical marijuana. So just, just public input.
So, um, go ahead.
Would that be, would that be a more, like, the planning commission would prefer the, and the city council was gonna do the regular thing, right?
Yeah, well, what, yeah, what Barry is saying is that a couple of years ago, as I mentioned, when that Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act was approved by the legislature, that, um, that allows communities, allowed them at the time, it's, it's still in effect. So, so, so a community could opt into only permitting medical facilities. Um, at that time, the city opted out of that particular, um, you know, way of, of, of doing things. I think Barry's point was that, okay, you opted out from medical, but now you opted into recreational ones.
Wouldn't recreational be the same as medical, though? I mean, wouldn't medical be a subset of? I mean, can't, can't you do both in, in an operation?
Not the way it turns out.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I would like to know.
I can tell you, in, in Colorado and other states where there's recreational passed after medical, what's happened is a medical card for medical cannabis has pretty much just become a discount card, because it, a medical sale is subject to a little bit lower tax rate. But, I mean, a, a dispensary sell recreational, they sell medical. You show them your medical card, and you just qualify for a lesser sale price.
Sir, could we also have your name and address, please?
Yep, my name is Joe Lucas, and I'm, I'm just a lawyer. I represent cannabis businesses, uh, in Grand Rapids, and I live in Belmont, Michigan.
Thank you.
So then, I'm sorry.
Please, come on up and use the, uh, microphone, then we'll get a, a take.
Sorry. Uh, my name is Ryan Posner. I live on one-three-nine-nine-two Grand River Drive. It's just outside the limit, city limits on, uh, Grand River Drive. Uh, to answer your question, no, you can't, not with parent law. They're completely separate, separate laws. You can't. Maybe someone pointed out a feature of the old mental laws where you can do it like they have in Denver, but right now, they're completely different establishments and facilities written up under two different completely laws. So just to answer your question, you can't have medical and recreational. It would only be recreational cannabis at this, any facility.
Yes, okay. I mean, if, if someone had a debilitating medical condition, that would stop guns from going into a recreation store, leaving that purchase.
Well, exactly.
Assuming they fit the other criteria, but, um, yeah, if you buy it, as, as I understand it anyways, I mean, that is just like the two thousand and eight original Michigan Medical Marijuana Act allows for certain things that did not include, you know, commercial establishments. You know, the two thousand and sixteen series of laws, primarily the MMF LA, is allowed for five types of commercial medical establishments. And now we have this, this recreational one, which allows for sort of a similar, similar establishment, but they're not exactly the same. There are six, and their language is a little bit different. It's a provision center for home retail or whatever it is now. Um, so some of the languages is a little, a little bit different, and, you know, I guess my, at, at this point, I guess, I'm not, you know, I defer to the city's legal counsel. I'm parsing through what, what all that means. Um, as we talked about on the twenty-second, it sounds like, um, the city council will, will be drafting a, a separate regulatory ordinance that would address, um, you know, the, the licensing part of it, coming up with the criteria for how you pick. If you have more applicants than you have available sites, um, you know, how you pick who's, who the winner is, and who's, you know, all that kinda stuff. That's something that is a little bit outside your purview as a, as a planning commission, so I think for your purposes tonight, I think, um, the focus should be kind of on what, what do you wanna regulate? You know, what are some of the, the potential, the impacts that you, as planning commissioners, might be concerned about? How can we build that into fair regulations? Where should we put them, et cetera, et cetera?
And also, what's our timeline here? We're looking at, um, March and April to develop the ordinances, actually, and then, and then hopefully go onto a public hearing in May and a vote in June or something along that line.
In theory, something like that.
Something along that line.
Yeah, I mean, so, nothing can, can really happen until, I mean, Larry, the state, um, is not going to accept applications for these until they have, they have to write up administrative rules. And they have a year to do this. They have until November, I.
Right.
My uneducated opinion is that they're probably not gonna have that done until November.
Right.
Um, it sounded like from listening to, um, you know, the city attorney at, at the previous meeting, they would be very surprised if anything came on for that. So the city's real hard deadline, having something in place, effective, and ready to go is gonna be later in, in the fall. That being said, I think it's, I think it's important for planning commission to keep moving on this. But if you take three meetings, you know, I mean, I, I don't want you to rush through, through, through this either, and set out something you don't like for the sake of saving money. That might not matter anyways. So there's.
For, for, to, to give Andy some sanity, um, I'd, I'd like to direct him to take the areas that would be, uh, C three, um, and, uh, light industrial and general industrial. Um, and I guess River's Edge. I, I, you know, every time, I used to live along Lake Michigan, and every time you, somebody says you can't build, they figure out a way to do it. So just because it's a flood plain, I'm not so sure that there wouldn't be a way that they could do that. And I, and I, I don't see any reason to exclude it at this point. Uh, if nothing else is gonna be there, it seems like that might not be a bad place to have it, frankly, but, um...
I don't know. Pot girls will want to put some in.
Well, yeah, you know.
Some weed drakes, if you don't care.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm thinking that if we give Andy the general, uh, areas here, at least to, to start with, of C three, uh, L, L I, uh, general industrial, and the River's Edge as our areas, and eliminate the downtown area, and do me a favor, eliminate that one little piece of C three down there.
Why this central city, I guess? We can only have ordinances on keeping the aesthetics of the city.
Well, the central city would be eliminated anyway.
The little dark pink?
Yeah, yeah. All of that in those two circles, those two poles are, is eliminated because of the schools. So that one little area there, what I'm saying is, we, we would eliminate that from, from having any marijuana industry there, because it's part of the downtown area. So if we wanted, if we're eliminating all of the downtown area, we would just pick that out, too.
Well, what's a defined downtown area? Is there downtown, is there?
Well, I think we have it according to the, uh, zoning ordinance. It's zoned downtown. That's zoned downtown. Those street. Well, I think we have it according to the uh zoning ordinance, it's zoned downtown, that's zoned downtown, those street areas. So the light pink is not zoned downtown. So if we take out the, the darker pink, if you wanna call it, or whatever that color that is, yeah, if you take out that area. So you would have the, you would have the C three, you would have the light industrial, you'd have the industrial and you'd have the River's Edge. And the only exception to that would be that C three area that's contained in between those two cars, you know?
And it has a gas station.
Right, yeah, it's a gas station.
Yeah, the station right here.
Yeah, so maybe it's immaterial, but.
I guess for, with, with regard to the River's Edge, I would point out that right now the city allows basically no buildings or structures at all. In that district, you mean we allow basically any open space stuff like parks and parks and.
Well, it is a week, it has gone a point here to help.
And we can be allowed for like, you know, the help station and travel, I think, so.
Was there something saying that the dark pink was eliminated, I guess?
No, there's nothing in the act that would specifically preclude the downtown.
My question would be, the downtown area is eliminated by virtue of being close to preschool, but just.
No, but you, you, to take care of that part, you could stipulate, that'd be an easy one, just from zoning perspective, to say, we can't allow it in a downtown area.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so your, your, your downtown as far as zoning goes, your C two um is basically from Monroe down almost to the light, which would be right here. So all of this is excluded um al- already, your downtown, my view, extends this way a little bit, which we, uh, this was zoned, I think, C three before, which made no sense, which is why we drafted the, the mixed use district. It goes this way, so, you know, you know, you know, what, what your actual downtown is, is, is debatable. For purposes of zoning, your C two's district is your quote downtown zoning district, so it's got, it's having zero setbacks uh of a lot of the mixed uses and stuff. So um, if it's the city's interest to not have these facilities in its downtown, the simplest way to do that would be to just disallow them to C two.
That's what I was asking, was there someone who said, let's not make it in downtown? If so, then, I mean, if not, why are we?
Yeah, that was, that was the general, I think, I, I felt that was the, the consensus at the twenty second between the council and the planning commission, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my impression.
I think people thought those were the boundaries were gonna get rid of it, but since those didn't pick up, the buffers didn't pick it up, you can just get rid of it.
Yeah, that, that one, yeah, that one little area in there that.
I did have a question though about um, the point that was made earlier about, you know, areas that are across from parks, like, how do you, how do you, from a non-regulatory standpoint, makes, you know, little lots like this that would go up against a public park area, and is that just something where you, that becomes a city consulting and it's a regulatory?
Well, it could be, um, it depends though, so you could do like, like we have, you know, illustrated here, just for, you know, conversation purposes. You could also say that it can't be within a hundred fifty feet of a public park, right? So that would eliminate this area. Um, that doesn't mean the whole parcel is eliminated, it just means that if they're gonna build a building, they'd have to do it up here and not way down here. Um, it's, it seems likely that especially if there's something retail oriented, that it is, is, is proposed at some point. I mean, typically the retailers want to be on main street, obviously, that's where all, all of the traffic is, so I would expect that anyways, but obviously, um, there are different types of facilities, not all of them would require a heavy retail uh presence, so if possible, that a transporter or a grower or a processor wouldn't care if they had main street signage, in which case, yeah, it's possible they could do it here, uh, whether or not that's something that, that you're comfortable with, that's at the discretion of the planning commission. I understand that the city, the council would be looking at an ordinance to say that it can't be, you know, used in, in parks and public places. Um, that's one of those great areas in the, in the act that talks, you know, that the question is, well, what is, you know, what does a public place mean? There's some discussion about that too, right?
Can I throw out one more thing, just so you're aware of, which we just, uh, uh, the trails, so the trail's gonna, whether you call that, trails are a linear part. So it's gonna go, that trail's going through Dyke's property, through, you know, down, and uh, we just got word today that, that the funding is, we're receiving the funding, so.
Good, good. Uh, again, I would go back to saying, for Andy's sake and to move this discussion along, at least until the next time around, that we just simply include C three, light industrial, general industrial and River's Edge. We can always take them out, it can always be amended, and if we have specific issues, city council may be able to address them. We may, before we take a vote, we can always do that, city council's gonna have to adopt whatever ordinances we set up anyway. So my, my thinking is, is that makes it clean for him at least, and then he can come back with a clean map that we can actually look at and see what, what is for tail. The only thing I'm saying is, is eliminate the one between the two clouds that are.
Yep.
That, that.
That will be downtown area.
Keep, keep the industrial area there because that could be used, yeah, cause the, the industrial area there could be used. Uh, across from King Milling, as an example, could be used possibly for storage or something along that one.
Um, is there any other discussion amongst the planning commissioners about some of the other items outlined in our, in our memo? So we have some hair dropping here about building security, uh, border control, uh, isolation radius, about depending also how you talk about uh signage hours, et cetera, I mean, we can certainly, or I guess Mr. Chairman, other, other question would be, if you wanna focus on just those locational aspects first and then have you come back and take a look at a clean map of all these lines, the whole river?
Yeah, I, I, I feel comfortable with that. As far as the signage goes, I, I think our existing, my opinion is the existing signage takes care of that, I'm not worried about that. That seems to me to be kind of a no brainer.
I think we need to address the order though.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm certainly a no expert on that, so.
Word to get one thing, it's sounding so bad.
Yeah.
I meant to.
Um, so I, I guess we need as much information or suggestions as, as you can come up with, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything magical about it, but.
You know, I, I don't have knowledge of a store, does the store admit an order? I mean.
No product.
No, I mean, periodic, yeah, yeah. Is it, I guess, I'm not educated on the, the, the fragrance of, you know, you walk into a cigar shop, you smell cigars, but outside you don't smell cigars.
Yeah, and that's a good question, because.
I think the odor would be more for like the, uh, growing in it or the processing and uh transportation.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's nothing, the odor itself is non-toxic. So that comes into it too, I mean, you know, if you lived into a paper making city, you get within twenty miles and you can smell it.
It's, it's just the way it is.
If we're making suggestions or rules, I guess I'd rather be educated myself on, does this pause an offensive order or, you know, then, yeah, you probably don't want it when people are walking out in public.
So that's, that's just something that we can, we'll, we'll get some research on that. As far as security goes, um, what, what, yeah, where are we securing it from? You know, I mean, the, the, the store that has any product has to set up their own security, so I'm not, I, I, I guess I'm not overly concerned about security as well at this point. I mean, if we're inviting, you know, like a bank robbery or something like that, I, that, that's something different, I guess, but I, I don't see where security is.
I think the security is because they can't, from my understanding, they cannot deposit their funds into a federally insured bank. So they hold lots of cash on site and where it's going, not exactly a hundred percent.
Well, the city of Grand Rapids requires this crime prevention through environmental design plan, uh, you know, maybe we just need to get a copy of that and figure out what that would be. Also, I, I just read where East Lansing is going through this exact same process, the exact same thing that we are doing, so it might, you know, be worth a call it out to East Lansing. Cause they're doing the exact, they're following the exact same format we are. And they're, they're, yeah. Yeah, well, they've got, I mean, they've got additional issues down there, obviously, but.
We need to see what they got and see if we can make a hybrid out of that.
Right, exactly, I think Grand Rapids is a different league.
There's, yeah, I don't think Grand Rapids, what I've seen in Grand Rapids and whatever other Grand Rapids, I don't see it transferring to here, it's a different animal.
But I think just setting up the zoning districts and, and security, I think will take care of itself, odors is something that we just, we need to learn about. Um, lighting, there's, there's nothing there, um, isolation radius and buffers. I think, I think that is something that once we narrow in on the areas, we can talk about that further and probably discussion again at some point with the city council, we'll, we'll wanna get back together with, and with my, and the attorneys. Because otherwise, there's no sense us writing an ordinance that the city council is just asymmetrically opposed to or has, you know, major changes, like that seems very foolish. So uh, at some point, let's kind of put that into the mix, I would, I would think. And then signs, again, they don't have a problem with that, and hours of operation is something that we can set.
Yeah, some, some places set, you know, hours of operation, you can buy ordinance from here to here, uh, other, with other uses and depending on what are doing, some have this on, on a case type, case day three. Um, I guess there are, you can, there are lesses and minuses if you, if you're, I mean, from a consistency standpoint, it's definitely easier on, you know, on administrator to say, look, that's what it says, and discussion is uniform across the board.
Can we do it, can we do it by type of operation?
I don't know, so that's, that's one of the big questions that I have is, as I read the act, um.
Or is that something where to start these off?
I don't know, so, if, if, if I read the act, you know, one of the things that it says is that you can limit the number of marijuana establishments within your community. Um, marijuana establishment is, is defined as one of these six types, so a grower, a micro business, a processor, a retailer, a secure transporter, a safety compliant facility. So I don't know if the city is allowed to, to pick and choose, which, so, you know, maybe you could say, we only want growers and, you know, processors, or we only want a micro business, we're interested in all this other stuff. I don't know if you can do that, my reading of the act was that you can't, but I am not a lawyer.
And also can they combine more operations?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I know with the, with the medical act, there's some places that I've worked before and there were applicants that were definitely interested in housing. Um, all, all five, in that case, there were five types, they were, they were interested in rehabbing an industrial building, rebuilding, growing, processing, provisioning, transporting and safety compliance, all within one rooftop, so that might be a viable go here, I don't know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions at this point that kind of.
If they did that, could we limit that to industrial? I mean, is that an optional, of course?
Factory.
I mean, it seems like it.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it's, again, as long as it's not reasonably impractical and how that, does that mean that you permitted five establishments or one, I don't know, it's only five, I guess, but.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a lot of interpretation that has to go on still and.
Well, you get to do that.
Yeah, well, sort of.
Sorry, circling around.
Yeah, and the.
Um, parking and landscaping, again, our parking and landscaping, according to this, are just fine, actually, my, my opinion. So, um, does that give you stuff to work on here to, to bring back to us?
Yeah, no, um, yeah, and that's, I mean, honestly, this is a little bit of what I anticipated, the only thing, I did some research on the, on the sign aspect for instance, I don't remember if it was here or somewhere else, but at some point, somebody asked me, if someone had been like having like the actual like belief in the four twenties, some of that stuff on the signs, and can we do anything to prevent that? At some places, they just have like, like a green cross or something, and it gets where it is. I think you can, there are some communities that have like a, like a medical marijuana sign ordinance, but from what I've read, those primarily limit some of the other sign types. So for example, in certain districts, we all offer sandwich boards and feather signs and temporary signs and tangible copy or human signs, or someone's out there, you know, holding the sign and dancing on the street. And, and those things, they'll limit that a lot of times to say, you can only have, you know, a ground sign or a pole sign, you can't have a wall sign, you can't have all these other, these other decorations. So that would, would be something, I guess, where the commission.
For our sign ordinance, we have a lot of that already.
A lot of this controlled, you, I, you can restrict some of that further as long as it's not contact, so I wouldn't touch, at this point, I wouldn't get into contact. You know, as, 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 as my, if you wanted to get into some of those other kind of ancillary sign types.
It's a business, why, why would we treat them differently than anything else at this point?
Yeah, that's, that's certainly one, I mean, plenty of people would share that, that philosophy, that's up for the commission to kind of decide what makes the most sense to you.
Fair enough, commissioners at this point? Andy, you're, you've got, um, right now, the, the, the next thing that we have, since it appears as though we will not have a public hearing on River's Edge Park, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we will on the, um, so we will have that at the martial. And then we'll return to this as well. Anything else? Staff report.
Before you all, I have a question, I have, um, my name is Ray Closer, I am the owner of a company called Closer Farms, I'm from Eureka Township. My brother over here is one of my partners. Uh, we are eye-balling these licenses in a few different communities, and obviously Lowell, the city of Lowell is one that we're looking at very seriously. Um, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of a perspective from uh someone who's looking at, went into this business. Um, and just a couple of comments on what you, what you mean. As far as odor and security operations, I think we're discussing those. Um, under the MMFLA rules that have come up from more of the medical ones, they've defined some strict regulations on what you do with odor control and security on there. So if you're curious at how they are doing the medical law, that will probably translate pretty closely to how they do their rules for the, for the recreational law. Um, which will be pretty close, so if you wanna see kind of a way that they're doing it, maybe where you could bolt your own ordinance around it, might be a good way to go it, go about it. Um, just wanna make a kind of a green cross, I think that's a, I think that's specific to medical facilities that, you know, defines them as, this is a, a medical marijuana establishment. That was kind of interesting. Uh, and then as far as, I know you have a lot of time, uh, Larry's got till November, obviously, to complete their rules. Um, but it's, you know, every, every meeting we come to and every, every time you guys give a discussion, we get a little bit more information on where you can allow this and allows us business owners to uh make plans. And I mean, obviously, once Larry goes live with their rules, we wanna be on board with their application, so I do appreciate you moving forward with this and maybe our.